Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Dr. Ganesh Natrajin, Chairman, Five F World. Dr. Uma Natrajin, Founder, Global Talent Track Limited and GTT Foundation. Ms. Sushma Rajkupalan, Partner, Rittenhouse Ventures Fund III in Philadelphia. And Mr. Ijaz Ghani, Lead Economist, the World Bank, who is also joining us from the US. Ladies and gentlemen. It is a pleasure to have you all with us this evening and thank you so much for joining us for a discussion on the book, Nari Shakti: Women Take Center Stage, which has been put together by Uma and Ganesh Natrajin. Uma and Ganesh, it's a pleasure to have you with us and it is a privilege to host a discussion on your one-of-a-kind book on women power. Thank you so much for joining us and a very warm welcome to you. Sushma and Ijaz, great to have you on board and thank you for joining us. Both of you are outstanding achievers and you've contributed important articles to the book. We look forward to hearing your views on the purpose of this book. Ladies and gentlemen, Nari Shakti is an outstanding book and it is an important addition to the growing literature on the changing status and role of women in the economy and family. Importantly, many of the contributors to the book are men of importance who share their views and experiences on women's centrality to a strong economy and a healthy society. Economists Ajit Ranadri and Ijaz Ghani have provided the reasoning for enabling women to have unrestricted role in the economy. Veteran policy designers, Dr. Mashalkar and Dr. Kailkar have provided prescriptions for women's centrality to social harmony and making India compassionate. Former SPI Chairperson, Anundati Bhattacharya has shared her experience of succeeding as a woman in what is considered a man's world. Sushma Rajkupalan has written about promoting excellence among women in the corporate sector. There are many other important contributions from eminent persons from diverse fields that help a reader appreciate the issue of women's autonomy and authority. The world celebrated Women's Day last week with a mix of applause for women's achievements and protests against low progress in realizing individual and economic equality for women. The key takeaway of the various observations of the occasion was that women are no longer asking to be granted mere equality. Rather, they are willing and able to claim their work, lifestyle, wealth and power by themselves. This is a turning point in the gender politics and women are beginning to look at life and the world independent of what men traditionally have enjoyed more freely. The social and economic legitimacy of women's independent choices is the greatest achievement of the past century of struggle and evolution. However, this change is not happening for all women at the same speed and to the same extent. There are still men and women too, who are struggling to make the transition from the agrarian and feudal structures to urbanized and digitalized. The biggest burden of the longing for belonging and herd fencing continues to be borne by women. However, there is an inevitability about a reorganization of the society and the economy with fewer limitations on women because of their biological genre and tribal claims on them. As the economy's demand for talent grows and technology frees income from grunt work, women can earn to buy their freedom and organize their lives around what they want and not what others want them to do and be. Having the freedom to choose for oneself and the ability to pay for it is critical for women. Parity will naturally follow. We have an outstanding panel today with varied expertise and experiences and we are looking forward to an exciting and meaningful discussion. With these words, it is now my pleasure to invite Uma to address and take the session forward. Over to you, Uma.
Thank you very much, Rekha. What a wonderful introduction and the context setting that you have done. That has made my job easy. And right at the start, I would like to thank you and Aima for inviting us to talk about a book and giving us this opportunity to share some of my perspectives and of course perspectives of some of our poor authors. And it's such a pleasure to be here this afternoon with all the learned participants and those who are attending this program. Before I talk about the book, the genesis of the book and what we have tried to convey through the book, I'd like to take a few moments to talk about my own background, which was also one of the reasons, I would say, I thought about being part of this book. In about three decades of my work experience with the corporate world, I have spent almost seven years with Zee TV, building Zee Education. And that was a time when television was very new to India and we were, private sector television was new to India in the 90s. And we tried to explore how television medium could be used for the benefit of education, learning from home. And that was quite an exhilarating experience particularly because almost ninety percent of the team that had gathered at that point of time were women and majority of them had nothing to do with either media or education or television or for that matter, the entire know-how for putting the program. Thereafter, I actually spent some time with HSBC, trying to see how, once again, the talent, particularly with the women, talents that we were trying to bring into the organization, how do we retain them and how do we attract more women to come on board? That was a time when joining organizations which had late-night shifts was considered taboo and quite a few were not comfortable, their families were not comfortable, joined such organizations. So that was a great experience trying to build, managing a responsibility of what was known as corporate development. And thereafter, this whole opportunity to set up this business that I'm currently focused on, which is Talent Track. This was a venture which was set up primarily to look at the employability requirement, faculty foundation. Together, have been able to train and place, people given, give them opportunities for becoming employable as part of the corporate world. Close to about hundred thousand people being in place every year. And I'm privileged to also mention here that I've been privileged to enable almost sixty to seventy percent of these one hundred thousand people are women whom we managed to put into work, whether they join corporates, it matter, they build their own livelihoods. Currently, we have set up these centers called Ankur, which are in multiple locations across the country, which look at the circular economy concept and enable women to look at waste materials and how with Google approach, they can build their own livelihoods. So, these are some of the highlights from my career, which have enabled me to look at women playing role in the corporate world as entrepreneurs and also look at the challenges they face, they continue to face. And at the same time, also experience the success, not only my own success, but success of my coworkers, success of several other women who have gone on to becoming leaders in their own right. So, that brings me to this question, the next question of, so what prompted us to think about writing this book? As I said earlier, it was not only the experience of working with women, for women over the last three decades, but it is also arising from the fact that the last book that I was part of, where Ijaz and Ganesh were also, they took the lead roads in terms of editing the book on behalf of PIC, that is Pune International Centre. The book was about pathways for India in terms of the growth opportunities that lie ahead of India. And there we had explored little bit about what women can do in terms of the growth story for India. That led us to believe that there is an opportunity for us to think in a larger context, look at multiple dimensions which are inhibiting or are currently the showstoppers for women. And how do we get them out of those kind of disadvantaged situations and get them to become more proactive? And what kind of environment that could be created or facilitated so that women in their own right can become true partners, equal partners in terms of taking India to the next phase of growth and building that five trillion dollar economy that we're all talking about? So this sort of a goalpost is not going to be feasible if we do not really take advantage of this gender, the women, who have the potential, who have been fortunate to have access to education over the last three decades in particular. And yet we find that women who enter into the corporate world, they have their set of challenges. Even today, we find that while STEM education is attracting large number of women and we find that almost equal numbers, we have women in the universities undergoing STEM education. When it comes to actually entering into the work sphere, perhaps IT industry is a great example where almost fifty percent of the women at the entry level, fifty percent of the jobs at the entry level are women. And in about four to five years' time, when you find that women have to take on additional responsibilities, slowly the percentage shrinks to twenty-five percent. And by the time, you know, you really look at the very senior levels, that is, let's say CXO levels, we find that only one percent of the workforce, the senior leadership team comprises of women. We find that people like Sushma, who have been at the helm of affairs for large organizations and others, they would be able to talk about, why is it that even today, despite the fact that women come with good pedigree, good education, excellent opportunities, they have not been able to hold their fort and continue to build successful careers in the corporate world? Similarly, when we look at the field of entrepreneurship, despite the fact that when it comes to the number of startups that India has created, particularly in the last five years, hardly one percent of them actually are run fully by women, that is owned and run fully by women. So there are challenges women face in that context as well. And then when we talk about women from the marginalized communities with whom we have been working with extensively, we find a whole range of socio-economic compulsions because of which they are unable to come out of their homes. And although skilling programs are provided to them and livelihood support is provided to them, very few of them are actually able to take advantage of them even while they are at home because of other compulsions. And lastly, I want to talk about digital literacy and digital India that we are all so proud of and the kind of digital advantage of the digital social infrastructure that this country has created and that has become the envy of several countries, including the developed countries. Despite that kind of digital infrastructure that we have in place, we have a very long way to go in terms of providing seamless access and especially the capability and the expertise to exploit this infrastructure even where it is available for the benefit of women to build enterprises and to be able to make an impact for themselves in the society. So, while these are some of the problems that we have to solve and we have to find solutions for them, it is interesting to find that already there are some solutions in the making and some of these problems are being addressed in specific, in specific ways so that some of the women, some of the organizations and some of the women together have been able to make progress. So, in this book, we have been fortunate to have the opportunity to collaborate with women who have been able to think through some of the problems either in their own personal careers or in as part of the corporates that they have been part of or they have been part of the policymaking processes. And together with men like able, you can say, great policy and thinking male leaders like Ijaz, like Professor Mashalkar and Professor Kailkar and Ganesh and several others, we have been able to bring in some interesting perspectives and that's what Nari Shakti is all about. It's not about women, it is about perspectives that we would like to share with everybody, which could make a difference and take this country to the next level of success and growth. So on that note, I would like to thank Aima once again and let me stop here and over to you, Rekha, for the next part of our discussions.
Thank you, Uma. That was fantastic. Ganesh, may I now request you to...
First of all, thanks a lot to the earlier management decision. I've been privileged to be part of the National Council and been active in the association for quite some time. And it's always amazing to find that even on Holy Eve, we have close to two hundred and fifty participants on this chat. So absolutely, congratulations to you, Rekha, and Sanjay and the whole team.
We have another two seventy in classrooms plus hundred on social media. I couldn't resist adding.
Now you're scaring me, Rekha. Okay, so let me just carry forward a little bit from where Uma said and then of course I'm going to ask my two speakers to pass their comments. Whenever we write a book for the Pune International Centre, and this is the third, we first wrote a book on facing up to the China challenge, which was very opportune when China had kind of come and squatted on Ladakh. Then we wrote Pathways to India's Success and this is really the third in our trilogy on the women issue. Normally, we take an economic, diplomatic, human perspective to everything we write and normally we leave with the economy. In this book, if any of you pick it up, you'll find we'll leave with mythology because Indian mythology is replete with stories of right from the Mahavaram and the Ramayan. Very good, you know, the whole concept of women as Shakti and it's a very dual thing because on one hand, women are revered as gods and goddesses. On the other hand, women are kind of shown their place in society over the last many, many years of, you know, very divisive kind of gender biases. So that's something we can have touched upon. Then of course, we asked two of our most famous economists, Dr. Ijaz Ghani, whom many of you know. He was a principal economist in World Bank for a long period of time and he and his wife did some amazing work in the World Bank and he's been very active now as a fellow of the Pune International Centre in all the work we do today. And then we had a very interesting set of discussions from men, including Professor Anil Gupta of Ayam Ambedbaat, who's a celebrity professor. Then of course, as Uma mentioned, Dr. Rabnat Mashalkar, Dr. Vijay Kailkar, who are the President and Vice President of the Pune International Centre. Then we asked Safina Hussain, I don't know if you, how many of you know her, started a wonderful NGO called Educate Girls, which is working with the tribal girls of Uttar Pradesh, Madhya Pradesh, Rajasthan and Bihar, putting girls back to school. As some of you may be aware, the challenge of women dropping out of, young women dropping out of schools in COVID was not just that they dropped out, but because many of them never went back. And Educate Girls is actually doing human servers in making sure that that is redressed. After that, we have various people, Sushma is one of them, a huge success story in the venture capital industry and the corporate sector, who has written about her experiences and I'm sure she'll talk about a few of those. And quite a few others from India and the US who've spoken about their experiences. And then of course, we talked about policymakers. There is a very wonderful young woman who was in Delhi and now in Bangalore called Pooja Goyen, who actually spoke with us in the session we did for the Badras Management Association just a few weeks ago. And Pooja is the CEO of Udayati Foundation, which is working on women's policy. And we also got Vandana Chavan, who was a Member of Parliament from Pune for ten years. She just finished her term. To actually talk about the women's movement, the women's reservation bill, etc. So this is as comprehensive a coverage of women from maybe fourteen different perspectives that you can expect to see. So what we'll do in the next maybe twenty-five minutes, I'm going to get maybe seven, eight minutes of comments from first from Ijaz and then from Sushma on their perspectives on this topic of Nari Shakti and what women should and can achieve. Then I'll kind of round it off with a few of my own experiences and then we will have adequate time for questions and answers. So please think of your questions, put them in the chat line, we'll be happily at your service. So over to Ijaz, I mean, give us a little economic perspective. I know you wrote in the chapter on why women must work, but any other thoughts that have come to your mind, love to hear them. You don't mute, Ijaz?
Yes, it's still on mute. Okay. You know, most of the material to read is available in the book and it's available online. By the way, I'm not representing the views of the World Bank, you know, I'm not with the World Bank anymore. So let me, I want to focus on how can we scale up the impact of this book on Nari Shakti? The first thing that India needs is a national gender strategy. It doesn't exist currently in India. Niti is looking at index of work, etc., but Nithya Yogi doesn't have a national gender strategy. So the first call is that it's high time India adopted a national gender strategy for Nari Shakti. I think this will make a huge difference. The, I mean, India adopted a national AI strategy because of the artificial intelligence that's... So it has several national strategies, but the national strategy of gender is still missing. It's not there. I did a Google search and it says there is no strategy of national. There are things happening, you know. The second thing is, since we are with the Management Association, I mean, how can women entrepreneurship be scaled up? And here, it can be done by scaling up the physical and human infrastructure in small towns. Most of the women live in small tier-one, tier-two towns, which have very bad infrastructure and women do all the household work, getting water, cleaning, sanitation, etc., that prevents them from being more productive. So if the infrastructure can be scaled up, many more women will be able to join the labor force and be more productive. Similarly, women are lagging in education. I should say that India has in a global ranking some of the worst indicators on gender gap. And this can be overcome by focusing on scaling up physical and human infrastructure and education, especially focus more on the small towns where more women are concentrated. In terms of jobs, most of the women are concentrated in the informal sector. I think it's high time that the national gender strategy that should be adopted should try and strengthen the linkages between formal and informal sectors. The women and men are not enemies, they are friends. Informal and informal jobs are friends, so that needs to be scaled up. And this national strategy to be adopted should aim at transparency and collaboration. So all the women associations should have a high say in this. And you know, it should also reflect on the political representation of women. Long back, India reserved a quota for women in the Panchayat elections and that had a huge beneficial impact. So all in all, let me say, it's high time and it's urgent that India adopts a national gender strategy on Nari Shakti. And that strategy should outline the principles and policies to be implemented with adequate funding, financing, implementation, responsibility, which can reduce the gender gap in India. Let me end there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ijaz. I completely agree and in fact, one of the very famous persons we've alluded to in the book in multiple chapters is the lady from Harvard who won the Nobel Prize for Economics and that is Claudia Goldin. And if you look at Claudia's work, which actually kind of corroborates what Ijaz was saying, she talks about what it takes for gender parts, for women to participate more in work. And she's actually come up with this U curve, which says that when a country is very poor, then because of economic necessities, women are forced to work because they have to, everybody has to participate. As the country becomes more prosperous, which by the way is true for large numbers of small towns in India, then the family biases feel that look, a woman working when the man is also working is almost like an insult to the family. So women tend to drop out when a modicum of prosperity comes into the household. So that's the bottom of the U curve. And as if you see the European nations and America everywhere else, most women start working again because they feel that look, now they should come into their own and should not be just a service provider to the family. So that U curve is very interesting and I think in India, we are seeing in maybe somewhere, at least in Mumbai, in Delhi, in Bangalore of the world, a lot of women choosing to work, but I think we need to move up that curve very, very fast. So having said that, here is one woman who I think was born in Chennai, then worked in India, ran, was managing director of a company in India, ran companies in the US and now settled in Philadelphia. So Sushma, tell us your story.
Well, thank you. First off, I had to tick one of my bucket list items in my bucket list by writing a chapter in Nari Shakti. Hopefully, one day I'll write a book in its entirety. But this was my first published chapter. I've written a lot of articles, but this is my first book. So thank you, Uma and thank you, Ganesh. Ijaz, I think you presented the macro perspective extremely well. I want to now contrast it at a micro level. What can each and every one of us as individuals help in this endeavor? And it is less about just equality. Why shouldn't women outshine men? Okay? So it's less about equality, but much more about how do you really bring out the true power in women? So as, as a girl growing up in a, in a classical South Indian, you know, Hindu family with the revered goddess Durga being the, the symbol of everything, of power, of Shakti, as somebody who's the vanquisher of evil in life, right? It was very subliminally just implanted in me that women can do anything they want to. I come from a very humble family and if I look back at the foreword that Anu Agah wrote in the book and she encapsulates the problem very nicely and she talks about four things that deter women, okay? One of the things that the internal messages, oh, you cannot do this, oh, you shouldn't do this. There are too many restrictions placed on women right from the time when they are little children. The second thing she talks about is the lack of support. But very fortunately for me, I did not experience either of these two. I had a very supportive family, my mother especially, who sort of instilled in me that I should go out and do whatever I want to do in life. So sometimes I feel that I haven't lived up to her expectations. You know, because maybe I haven't capitalized on anything, on everything that I could potentially be doing. But then I very quickly tell myself that I'm somebody who's going to work till she dies. So, so you know, I'll continue to invent and reinvent myself. So the classical societal stereotypes are internal messaging of what you can and cannot do and the lack of support. And lack of support is very simple things and I'll give you an anecdote. When I was four or five, my, you know, my aim in life was to be an airline stewardess, okay? But nobody in my family said, oh my God, you're thinking small. Oh my God, shouldn't you be thinking something else? Instead, what I got was, Sushma, why? Why do you want to do this? And in my little childish innocence, I said, look, I love the dresses they wear and you know, I think I will look really good in it and I like serving people, okay? So very early in my life, there was a streak that, hey, I need to do something good. But the most important lesson in this was, people encouraged. People encouraged that thinking and this is something that I took to corporate world. I never to date, when an employee or a colleague comes up and says, Sushma, this is what I want to do. Sushma, this is what I want to do. I want to quit everything and I want to go have an agri farm. And I've had colleagues who have done that, okay? It's not something that we should scoff at. So the corporate world is rampant with stereotypes. And one of the key things that we need to do is to break those stereotypes. Anu also talks about the attitude in professional settings and the lack of successful role models in the world. And that's what I'm going to spend a little bit more time on, okay? A lot of women come to me and, and, and say, Sushma, you know, I'm not making progress. And the reason why I'm not making progress is nobody is taking cognizance of what I'm doing and I am not being given the opportunity. And my response to that is, please don't wait for anybody to give you an opportunity. Grab your opportunity. So there are two sets of reactions it evokes in women. One, who are sort of self motivated and people who want to do it despite the odds. And I fall in that category. So to, to date, when I'm asked to come and speak on all of these forums, I very seldom have negative stories to share. Maybe it's a conditioning that I have imposed in myself that, hey, this is a given. It's not like men do not have struggles, men do have struggles as well. And the people who have helped me the most have actually been men. And the second thing that I find is a lot of women, lot of successful women become so hardened in their thinking that they believe that in order to rise in life, especially in corporate life, you have to be this one tough cookie that, that, you know, you've, you've got to be this lone crusader. And I, 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 while I support self motivation, I think it's also very important to have a support system. So for the last 20 odd years, I have been mentoring women, very capable women. And I found that the antithesis of corporate world, which is the world of entrepreneurship, is the ultimate leveler. Both from an economic standpoint as well as from empowering a woman standpoint. And I'm part of multiple organizations. I work with Nudge Institute in India. I work with the Harvard Eye Labs, I work with PACT and I am a mentor. Yes, this is completely the opposite end of what I do for a living, which is a venture capital firm, okay? But I mentor these young and older women. And very recently, about six months ago, I started a company along with two other fantastic women in India. And it's called Second Careers. And this is largely, we are fighting ageism at one level, but we are also adding cohorts of women, returning mothers. Why should an individual have continuous working in order for them to, to be productive or a meaningful contributor? Let me pause here. I don't know if I've exceeded my time. But, but I'm extremely passionate about giving back. And this is how I am giving back one at a time to make a difference in the world.
Thanks, Sushma. That's really, I mean, I'm sure it's encouraging to many people to understand what you're doing and the variety of work that you and Uma have been involved in, in just promoting women's entrepreneurship. Just one example I'd like to take from the book and it's an amazing woman called Nikki Barua. Nikki actually grew up in Gohati in Assam and very traditional Assamese girl, got a scholarship and went off to the US and set up a company, a tech company in Los Angeles. And after four years, she sold that company. And I met her around that time because she was doing some work for one of the companies I advise in, in Pune. And I met her in LA and this just got very, very fond of her in terms of her sheer determination, the fact that, you know, her own story, which she has written the book, you know, getting off a boat in, in US and making a royal play in spite of biases and everything else. And then she told me that, look, I'm getting married next year, you've got to come for my wedding. So like a very Indian male stereotype man, I said, so who's the lucky man? She said, no, I'm marrying a Mexican woman, Monica. So in a sense, I mean, in four years she traversed that distance. And I was delighted to find that even her parents, very traditional parents from Gohati, went all the way to Mexico, attended her wedding. And in fact, they live in New York, very close to where we have an apartment. We meet them very often. Today they are now working for women all over the world. They have a web portal called Beyond Barriers, which actually guides young women to say that, look, how do you overcome obstacles in your own country as well as worldwide? And make that happen. So it's amazing how the kind of work that some people are doing. My own example, I mean, I, I, I mean, I was, we were speaking in I M, in AMA Ahmedabad just three days ago, where Professor Indira Parik was the legendary professor of I M Ahmedabad and of course Professor Nihari Kaur, who now runs the Ashank Desai Centre for Leadership and Organization Development. Both of them were panelists and they had amazing perspectives on what it takes women to succeed. I mean, their own self-imposed obstacles, parental obstacles, maybe family obstacles etcetera. Whereas men, and I say very proudly, every man needs five women to get him to succeed. I mean, right from grandmother to mother to wife to sister to daughter. And we still need support of women, whereas women sometimes have only themselves to look forward to as in terms of strength. So when I first started my career, I started a very male oriented organization, Promising Graves and Nasik, very manufacturing organization. Start set up my own company, then went to this company called NIIG, where I started learning about the power of equality. So NIIG had amazing women from all the management institutes you can imagine. Then at the age of 32, I became an, I became an entrepreneur, got an opportunity to build this company called AppTech. And there again, it was very equal opportunity. I think 55% of our center heads across 1400 center heads worldwide for education were women. So we, I learned the power of women. When I came to Zensar in Pune in 2001, again, it was a fairly traditional organization. I remember out of 14 people in senior management, just two were women, the financial controller and the company secretary. And three months later, one of the women who are extremely competent, very well trained, one is an ACS, one is a CA etcetera. One of them came and said, look, Ganesh, I've got to leave. I said, why? What's wrong with you? You're doing so well in your career. Look at your last appraisal. She said, nothing to do with my performance. Yesterday I went home and my mother-in-law told me that, look, your son, who was seven years old, only got 97 in his math exam. Now if you had stayed at home like other mothers, he would have got 99. And this woman quits because of that. So I sometimes wonder why women put so much pressure on them. And then I got this very young woman who had just joined us, she was 24 years old, called Pramila Kalivay. And I told Pramila, we've got to do something about this. So Pramila, highly enthusiastic, set up this group called Women for Excellence. And it was so successful, getting great speakers, getting very often people to talk about success, both men and women, that the Women for Excellence resulted in when I left Zensar in 2016, out of 17 people in senior management, 13 were women, okay? An amazingly successful woman. Sushma, of course, was with us for a few months or a few years, I think. So she was the corporate development officer for Zensar. But I found it, I would still say the measure of success was when a lot of men came to me and said, please, we want a me, me too group. Me is not what you think me too is, it was men for excellence. Saying men now needs an equal opportunity to succeed in this organization. So I'm saying that is the potential of women and throughout my life, whether in entrepreneurship or in corporate success stories, we found that out. So I think it's really, really amazing. And I, I, I look at the first question on this, where I think Professor Sunil Uni has said that it's important to have DEI governance and compliance policies. I've introduced it in a few organizations successfully. Thank you, Professor Sunil. Women empowerment and parity are the core of the policy. And I actually have a question related to that, which I really would ask both you and I just, I mean, today DEI is almost going out of fashion in corporate America, okay? So a lot of the companies I know are either rubbing out or hiding their DEI policies. So where do you think that's going to take us? I mean, if we oscillate between having a strong gender oriented or other, other policies for diversity and inclusion and then flip flop, so what's going to happen in the world?
Sushma? I can, I can go first.
Yeah, please.
I actually think it might be what we want. Because I don't think these kinds of mass changes can be brought about just by having regulatory frameworks. I think it has to be ingrained in every leader. Going into an organization, leading a company, you have the choice. So I have been in corporate setups where I've been the lone woman in a boardroom, okay? But when I've left the organization, I definitely wasn't the lone woman in the boardroom, right? The question is, how do we take these, any kind of reservation, allocation, policy that is required to stimulate the thinking? But I don't think policies are going to be self-sustaining in themselves. So the quintessential question is, how well is it ingrained in our leadership ethos? How many, and I would, I would openly ask this, how many women leaders are committed to seek more women in their teams? And in my, in my chapter, I've actually, so when I was writing the, the chapter, I said, well, I could give theoretical constructs and there were many other authors who were, you know, much more qualified to do that. So I gave very practical insights. Right from taking a secretary to saying, break stereotypes. I think ultimately this all comes down to breaking stereotypes and my first breaking a stereotype happened with my secretary, okay? And who is currently doing extremely well, she's a lead recruiter for, from one of the largest technology firms in the world. And when she was working with me, she had not set foot outside Pittsburgh. She had never flown in an aircraft. And here I was, making her go to Brazil. And her question to me was, Sushma, will I have my job to be your assistant when I come back? What if I'm not good in this new role? And I said, man, one of the biggest tumbling blocks is this sense of insecurity saying, I, I want to do so many things, but what if I fail? That fear of failure is something that a leader has a choice to basically poo-poo it and say you shouldn't have that fear of failure. Or on the other hand, could lend a supportive hand. And what I did was to say, all right, I'll give you a year, okay? If you don't like this, you can have your old job back. And I repeated that in every company that I played a role in. So my, my answer to you, Ganesh, is that I think breaking stereotypes is an imperative and it has to be ingrained in people and not regulated.
Very, very interesting point, Sushma. I just have a question for you. In fact, Rashni Jhulka is asking this thing. This is really inspirational. And she says that, look, do we agree that Indian, that indeed women in leadership roles are needed to bring openness towards capability development, building etcetera, etcetera? And so question to you, I mean, both you and your former wife, I mean, Abha, I think Abha has been a great inspirational leader in the World Bank. So when you see her or you see other women succeeding, where do you think they find that inspiration? Is it within themselves? Is it the environment? Is it the policy? Where does it come from?
Okay, Ganesh, so just to acknowledge, my wife, Abha Joshi, she won the World Bank Best Manager Award. And there are 3000 managers at the World Bank, so she did a great job. But it's much more important to draw the empirical facts, not from one or two individuals, but million of women in India. And in order to answer the question whether we need general gender focused policies for the development of India or we need just general policies for development for everyone. In order to answer the question, we need empirical evidence on what makes the difference if it is gender focused. And I'll give you two examples. One is in economic development, we use the phrase agglomeration economies, which is networking, knowledge exchange. And this networking and knowledge exchange is a very powerful driver of productivity growth and economic growth. And looking at all the millions of enterprises in 900 districts in India, we found that agglomeration economies and networking among women is much more powerful than agglomeration economies in men. So for example, if one woman starts a new startup, venture capital, many more women will join that. So it's a very powerful economic force and therefore we need gender focused policies. The second example I'll take is on political representation. India reserved, you know, one third of the seat for women in panchays. And where the women came into the panchays, many more women joined. So because of the strong agglomeration economies and networking and given that India is so lagging behind in gender equality, that the India's national strategy should promote more gender focused policies to promote entrepreneurship, new startups and several programs that can help to accelerate gender equality. And above all, India's goal to become a high income country by 2047 will not be achieved unless Narishakti becomes an integral part of the strategy.
Absolutely, I just so, so correct and so well put. Uma, question for you. This is Kavita Rajesh from Hyderabad Management Association. So she says that empowering women and it's hard to reach those highs, but this because the socio-economic culture acts as a barrier. So she's questioning really is how do we women overcome these barriers?
And that's an interesting question. I like to talk about three things which are important even before we look at women entering into the workforce. Fortunately, because of the right to education policy, today we are able to put not only, we are able to put a lot of children into school and that includes women. So the more we are able to facilitate education and that education opens their eyes and minds to the potential that they as humans have, that is a great starting point. The second of course is the home environment in which children grow up. If parents, if the society, the community that they are part of believe and respect women's potential. And I've been very fortunate to have in my own family, my mother, my mother-in-law and my grandmother who lived to the age of 109. And she made sure that every daughter-in-law of hers was educated, went to college and was able to stand on her own, stand on their own feet. So these are people who have inspired me and they continue to remind me that, like Sushma said, there is no need for, for me to compare myself with someone else. I got to look at my own potential and that's a belief that only the family can create early on in a child's life. Lastly, I want to mention the third thing from the state of Tamil Nadu, where way back, this policy of midday meal was introduced. And that meant whether you are a boy or a girl, you had the equal opportunity to be fed properly and go to school, learn whatever you can, but more importantly also get to have some nutritious food. And that really was, I would say, gave the opportunity for the state of Tamil Nadu, for the benefit of its citizens, to move forward with this whole education movement. And today, if you were to travel around the state of Tamil Nadu, right from bus drivers to, you can say, the petrol, the, where you fill your gas, those kind of places, to of course teachers and professionals. There is absolutely no question about, can I take up this job? That is a kind of an environment that has been possible to be created because of the early days policy. because of the early days policy of, I think, putting more children into school and that benefited girls as well. So when we have this kind of a comprehensive approach towards building a society where consciously the polity, the society and the family, they come together to ensure that they are going to create a happier environment for everybody. Girls, women will surely take advantage of that and succeed. That is my view.
Awesome.
If I can add something to what Umar said. Um, Umar, you said it beautifully. It does start with the family. Okay. Um, I've seen my mother-in-law, who was in MA in literature. Um, my father-in-law was with the United Nations. She chose not to work. Okay. Now, working is not the only way a woman can contribute. It adds something that I want to just underscore here. And I saw her systematically helping all the children of the people who would work in our house. Okay. She would take two hours of her time every day to give these children to us. And I'm very happy to tell you that one of these girls is now a police officer in the state of Tamil Nadu. Okay. Something that could have never been imagined. So my call to all the women is that not everyone needs to be at the uppermost echelons. Okay. You need to be able to contribute to this cause in whatever small doses you can, but do it in a sustained manner.
Absolutely. Okay. Jambunathan Malik says that D E I is all not required because all women need is merit, excellence, intelligence and maturity. And he, he feels that they have it in abundance. Women will excel and be successful irrespective of inclusivity or propagating diversity. So his view of working in leadership roles is that you don't need a policy. And by the way, there's similar kind of comment from Ankitta from Wims Coimbatore in Tamil Nadu. So she says that, do you think people will accept and follow even if in future there is a national gender policy? What do you think, Ijaz? Will a policy drive more inclusion? Ijaz, you're on mute.
Yes, I think in order to predict the impact of this on future outcomes, we can again look at the experience of the past. I mean, I keep emphasizing that the biggest lesson that the world has learned on gender equality from, in the world is from India. India has the most successful example of reserving one-third seat for women in the panchayats. And its examination by the World Bank, Harvard Business School, all of them has shown that it has had a huge positive impact. And therefore to say that we don't need gender focused, I mean, this, let me say that gender-focused policies have worked in India in the past, but we don't have so many policies. But do we need more gender-focused policies? Why should India need? And the answer to that is that India has one of the worst rankings in the global ranking on gender. Be it in terms of labor force participation of women, one of the lowest in the world. Number of new enterprises and number of enterprises, all of them are not, you know, in the informal sector. Uh, many women can't work because they are so busy with the poor infrastructure in small towns that they don't have the time to work. So I think the, India is pushing forward with, with investments in physical and human infrastructure. But giving it a gender lens will accelerate the process of both economic growth and job creation and gender equality and enable India to become a developed country by twenty forty-seven.
Absolutely. No, I think completely agree with you. And Umar, while you comment, I mean, you also answered this question. Manoharini from Wims Coimbatore. She's asking a question saying, how can we promote self-awareness, self-confidence and self-esteem among women? So Umar, any thoughts? And plus you had something to say.
Sure. I like to add to what Ijaz was mentioning and cite an example, I remember now. This was a beautiful researched article which appeared in Indian Express many years ago, where they had analyzed the role of women, um, in the state of Kashmir in the context of the policy that was drafted to enable more women to actually be part of science and medical education. It was very interesting that the problem of terrorism or the problem of, uh, uh, the problem that, um, violence and all of that was faced in Kashmir, women actually stayed back at home and took advantage of the policies which enabled them to go to science, um, institutions. And at one point of time, I don't know the status at this point of time, but at one point of time, the maximum, uh, number of, um, scientists from, uh, the state of Kashmir were women. So my take on this is in order to build that self-confidence, in order to, um, be able to feel good about oneself, while policies favoring women, uh, to, uh, take Ijaz's point, that is definitely going to be helpful. But if it is aimed towards solving a specific problem, if you take the uh, problem head-on and say, in order to solve this problem, I would like to have this kind of a policy in place, like I gave the example of, uh, midday meals or I gave the example of what happened in Kashmir. Um, that sort of an approach, we will be able to see in a very short span of time, transformation happening. And that will create further rejuvenation in the society. That is my take on this question.
Awesome. Since we only have two or three minutes left, let me just take the last question, which is from Rajni Julka. So she's asking a very interesting question, saying, what are the few key factors that you think is a must in policies, making it compulsory and stronger to build a woman leadership pipeline? Should a percentage number, sector-wise bench, also key competencies as a mandate, as leadership, more about, as leadership is more about building, nurturing, besides functional indicators? Absolutely correct, Rajni. And I think if you over-prescribe and you know, say so much percentage will be only women, I mean, you already have boards where there is a mandatory requirement for a woman leader on the board. But the reality is there are close to, I'm sure, uh, Rekha would have a better statistic, but I, from what I hear from Institute of Directors is there are over fifteen hundred women who have qualified the exam to be formal directors on boards, but they're not getting enough opportunities. At the same time, when I go to South Bombay, I meet women in the circuit who are on, on maybe twelve boards. So sometimes I wonder whether, you know, we are really have policies towards identifying women and giving them opportunities. So completely agree, whether it is at, whether it's in schools or colleges or entry-level jobs, as Umar was saying, to, I mean, I C I C in the early days did a fantastic job of ensuring that women did not drop out. As they got married and had children, they had a very supportive kind of ecosystem, which we tried and implemented in Zensar as well. And but throughout, I think, a career, A, we must encourage women to be very self-assertive, not really aggressive, but assertive. Saying what they want, as Professor Indira Parik was saying in Ammanabad three days ago, women don't ask for anything. They expect merit to be recognized, whereas men are no problem in saying, I want to do this. So I think that's, you know, issues, small issues like this, which is more of a behavioral or a characteristic of gender, have to be appreciated. So if you pave the way, if we have a more empathetic view on, uh, for women and in any role, whether it's agriculture or academia or an organization, I think we'd be successful. And I'm glad that Sushma, you mentioned Anu Agas, very excellent foreword to the book. Anu herself is an epitome of how a woman thrust into a leadership role can do such phenomenally in terms of building an amazing organization. So let me stop, we have only one minute left. Let me stop by saying, we had a wonderful discussion. Thank you for all those wonderful questions. And again, thank you, Rekha and I M A for giving us this chance to just share views. Thank you.
Thank you, Ganesh. And thank, thank you to Umar and Ijaz and Sushma. It's been a fascinating discussion. I could relate to so many of the points which were made by the panelists. Whether you're talking about breaking stereotypes or you're talking about women in governance, uh, when you're talking about, you know, uh, how women need to prove themselves again and again. Uh, I think it struck a chord with everybody and going by the questions which have been coming in. I think it's been a wonderful session. And thank you so much for joining us today. And I'd like to thank Umar and Ganesh for even thinking of writing a book, which is, uh, so interesting and, you know, it touches so many people. And thank you, Ijaz and Sushma. It's been wonderful having you. Sushma, I must say that when I was in college, I also got, uh, a job at British Airways and it was a tough decision whether to leave Stifans and join British Airways. And my father let me take the decision myself. I, I didn't join British Airways, obviously. I prefer being served to serving.
No, I think that's wonderful. That's wonderful that he gave you the opportunity to decide for yourself.
But I also must say that as a woman, I was approached to write about, you know, how do I use microfeminism in, uh, in, at work every day? I don't, because I don't like playing the victim card. I think a lot of the points which you all brought out were that women have to compete on an equal level with men. And I think let their work speak for them. It is important for government to give opportunity. I, I, I personally, Ganesh, have benefited from this, uh, uh, rule about having one woman on the boards. And it has, it doesn't mean that you'll get a board unless you prove yourself. I think every woman has to understand that, uh, you can help, you can get a push with reservation, but you can't stay there with reservation. But thanks again, all of you. And I'd like to thank a very active audience today and a very large audience, I must say, we have over four hundred people over from, I mean, two fifty on the, on Zoom and hundred in classrooms. I'm sure the young people have learnt a lot, uh, from this discussion and we've had over two hundred on social media. So thank you once again and thank you for being on the I M A platform. Good evening.
And just a shout out to the.
And thank you all. Have a great holy, all of you. Thank you.
Have a great holy.
Here's a shout out to all the college students. Feel free to reach out if.